Resolution four keeps the library open seven days per week. The annual incremental cost is 340,000. So if we just use the general fund balance in the library, the current library budget, it covers it. And my understanding is that current budget is through the half year of 2012 and we are short-staffed in the library now. There's some additional savings there that doesn't even show up in the budget.
Okay. Could that answer your question? Mayor Potem, McGinnis?
Well, I'm not quite sure where that is coming from because in the materials that were provided from the staff, in the discussion regarding resolution four, which keeps the library open seven days a week, it gives an annual incremental cost and it also gives the three-year budgetary cost, a five-year cost, which is the length of the dedicated millage. And it clearly states, which is what I believe to be true, that this cost is more than the dedicated millage and there is a number here that is provided that we would have to use a general fund subsidy of $1,330,688. That's what would be required to keep the library operational seven days a week under what's listed here in resolution four. And so I think that somewhat answers the question because I think what we would need to do in order to pay for that is to subsidize it through the general fund. We can talk about this figure, we can ask the library director Kathy Russ some more pointed questions about this figure if there's some dispute about it. But what I've gathered from reviewing this is that there's going to be a general fund subsidy. And I think that I've got some concern about doing something right now that's going to require a general fund subsidy in the amount of 1.3 million. There was some additional materials that were provided to us today that was a breakdown of what that millage level would actually be. We know that our voters just approved a .7 dedicated millage rate for the public library in August. And I believe that they, yes, that staff provided additional information today that equated that to what the millage rate would be to run the library for seven days a week as proposed in resolution four. And that would be 1.075. So that's what would be needed to generate that amount, the cost to run the library seven days a week. And here's my biggest concern. I've been through two budget sessions. I know that that's not as many as a lot of people that are sitting up here with us from city staff and on council. I think that there's a benefit to sitting through the budget sessions, although they're grueling, that we can look at the big picture. If we start to do something here where we're requiring a general fund subsidy of 1.3 million dollars and we're not looking at it in the sense of our budget for the city and all of the funds and all of the departments, I think we're really doing ourselves a disservice because there are a lot of things that are hanging out there that are coming up in years to come that we've pinpointed with a three-year budget that are not going away and that need to be discussed. We had a citizen that sat up here today and although he was saying he didn't want the transit center because we should use that to pay for police officers, which I'm not sure that that's really factual, actually, no, that's not factual, so I would want to correct that. But he did reiterate the fact that there's a concern about public safety and we've heard concerns about our infrastructure. And these are the kinds of conversations that we have in the context of a budget session. So we all have the opportunity to prioritize where limited funds should go. So I have a big problem making this kind of jump here knowing full well that it's going to come from the general fund subsidy without having all of us take a look at the big picture. So I would not be able to support resolution four as it's stated. If we want to have a discussion about moving days around, I would be open to that. I'm not really sure that we've seen scientific evidence at this point that the city really favors one day above all else. But if there's a way to make it work to swap days out, I can have that discussion. I'm not comfortable just forwarding 1.3 million dollars from somewhere in our general fund to keep the library running.
Councilmember Cheats?
Yeah, I disagree with the premise about the 1.3 million because that assumes that that's assumption that there won't be changes to the budget in April. And I think come the time that we do budgeting, we can make a decision about how we're going to change funds and that's the purpose of budgeting. This is a projection over five years assuming the same budget. And I think that we could say that the library is a priority of the city. We have to decide what our priorities are. And unfortunately, we've had our hours cut back and citizens passed the tax increase and I think this is a priority. So the question really is, are we willing to pay $170,000 between now and the end of the fiscal year to have the library open seven days a week? Because according to the data here, it says that it's 340,000 a year, so maybe I'm off a couple thousand dollars or so. But half of that is 170,000, so that's where my head's at. And then in June, or I'm not sure when we do budgeting, but when that would be, we can reevaluate. The other question I had was, why was Saturday decided to be the closed day? Because it's my understanding that that is one of the busiest days and that Monday through Thursday have been the day that was closed at a revenue neutral. And I guess this is a question for you and I'd be interested to hear your response.
Shall I?
Of course. But I'd like to mention that this essentially was a group effort in coming up with this report and that Tom Darling, our interim finance director, is really better versed in the financing of a five-year budget or a five-year document that has a dedicated .7 mil. So if there's questions about funding, I think that Mr. Darling should ask them. Kathy was primarily concerned just with indicating the staffing levels and the costs to accommodate a seven-day library or the cost to accommodate a various list of scenarios. But if you want to talk about funding, that's Tom Darling.
Okay, just to give you a little bit of background because I know this has been a huge part of my life for about two and a half years now. And I know Councilman Henderson came to a meeting that I had and I think he's familiar with the background. And forgive me, Councilwoman Cheats, I thought you and I had spoken about it a couple weeks ago and I was pretty clear, but I guess not. So let me back up a little bit.
At that point, you made it clear that it was more expensive to operate on Saturday than any other day.
Yes.
And my question is, according to this document, it says that Monday is the same cost as Saturday. That's my concern, is I'm being told something at two different times. And so I would like to hear your explanation because you also said that day, that Saturday is a busier day.
Mm-hmm.
And so...
Sure. What it has to do with is a state aid rule that's no longer in effect. I know Councilwoman Fleming is extremely familiar with this one. The state, in order to, in order for the Troy Public Library to receive state aid with all its attendant benefits, so it's money from the state, but it's a whole lot of other things, the library had to be open 55 hours a week. That's why 55 was such a magic number. You remember that from Mr. Kempin's petition, that's why the 55. So to close on Monday, or Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Thursday, we'll put the library at 51 hours. That's why we couldn't do it. That rule is no longer in effect, so now we can. But it does bring the library down to 51 hours per week.
You couldn't spread those four hours over the other six hours?
Just to give you, to give you some background, the, I began, I started at the Troy Library in June of 2007 and that was the tail end of what you've seen in some of the memos as the high point of the library's budget. So really for the last four and a half years, I've proceeded over a declining budget. I was never at the Troy Library during what you might call the glory days, when there were 118 people on staff. I've had, you know, staff reductions all the way along and I've reduced staff all the way along. In 2009, 2010, option one was being discussed and the library for the budget year that started July 1st of 2010 had a $1.4 million budget cut. And that was about a third of the, or a quarter, third of the operating budget. And when you have to cut 1.4 million dollars, you look at absolutely everything. And what became evident very quickly is that Saturday was the most expensive day to operate and that real savings came not by having the library open every single day but reduced hours, but to be actually closed one day. And you save utilities because you can dial them down for a significant period of time. You save a custodial. If the library's open for seven days, you have to pay a custodian all seven days. You cannot get away from it. You have utilities up at a consistent level through all of those seven days. And Saturday, because Saturday is an extremely busy day, it required the most number of staff. It was an eight-hour day, but we have staff in the building to open and to close. It's a longer day than Sunday, which at the time was five hours. Now it's four hours. So that is why, again, when you're cutting 1.4 million dollars, you scrutinize everything. I actually thought that we would be closed on Friday. I actually, when I started to do my budget cuts, went into looking at everything with the assumption that it would be Friday because Friday's a slower day. But Friday was not the most expensive day. So 26 people lost their jobs, we didn't fill four positions, we cut back on supplies, we cut back on building maintenance supplies, we cut back on utilities, we cut back on custodial, we cut back on just, I mean, absolutely everything that you could think of to get to that 1.4 million dollars.
May I ask you, Mr. Darling?
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Russ. Councilwomen, we've got to go around. Everybody has to have an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone else? You've already spoken. Councilwoman Slater, did you have anything to add?
Well, I'll defer to Councilwoman Cheats because I think it's important that he follows up with a financial question because I was going to ask for financial information also, but I'll defer to Councilwoman Cheats first.
Councilwoman Cheats? Thank you.
Mr. Darling, I mean, explain to me how it could be that Saturday is the same price as Monday through Thursday, when I've been told it's busier, we need more staff, that it's interchangeable, I guess, is what I'm saying. I'm looking at scenario one where we could have it closed Monday through Thursday with zero revenue change. Like I asked, I'm really happy you guys came back with that, but I was also kind of surprised that it was, that it's there and I, you know, your mask I...
Well, I guess she answered your question. Certainly it was a cost-neutral proposition. I think she tried to go through, again, each four different scenarios to put it out there and really start with the lowest. What is cost-neutral? Again, when we passed the millage, we had the idea of how many hours we were going to operate this thing and what kind of mills it would take to produce that. With that being said, that's about 55 hours. But also with that in mind is that it was closed on Saturdays at the same time. So again, you know, in scenario one, we're swapping out some hours and that's kind of the difference. Instead of being open 55, now we're open 51. Clearly, we know, as Ms. Russ has pointed out, that a Saturday takes more hours, however, or more staff people for that Saturday, however, overall, hours are less. Again, you're looking at a 51 versus 55.
Okay, so it's those four hours that are the big...
Well, that's certainly a part of it.
It's a portion of. And that's my questions for now.
Okay.
Councilwoman Slater?
I thought he was going to ask about the 1.3 million that we'd have to subsidize. And I think that's the important issue. This council has tried for the last two years to not make decisions based on year-to-year, but a three-year budget. And you have to do that to look at the big picture. Sure, we can take, we could have taken money last year and kept the library open for one year, but all you do is delay your problems. So it's important, Mr. Darling, to explain the 1.3 million that would have to be subsidized and what effect this would have on our budget three years from now.
Okay, well, that's an excellent question, Councilwoman Slater. Again, if you're going to pass a resolution that we're going to expend more money than what we project, because keep in mind, how do we operate? We create budgets and we live with inside those budgets. We reevaluate those every year when we go through the budget time. As you kind of pointed out earlier, and we do different projections, the budgets will move. With that being said, we've set our sights not on a one-year budget, but a three-year budget, which I think is very foreseen. With that being said, the proposition for, based on the budget numbers and projected numbers that Ms. Russ brought out, is that we would spend the library fund, because now it's own fund, into a deficit position by 1.3 million. And as we all know, you know, it's against the municipal act to, A, have a fund that's in a deficit position, B, budget a fund into a deficit position and incur that. So in order to stay out of that position, the general fund would have to subsidize the library fund from what we're seeing here, about 1.3 million, over the life of the millage, if you wanted a seven-day week. Now, as we say that, please keep in mind that for 2012, the general fund is already budgeted to have a shortfall of 2.6 million dollars. It is already budgeted for 2013 to have a shortfall of 780,000. And in 2014, it is budgeted to have a shortfall of about 2.6 million. So before we even start, we're about a $6 million shortfall before we even consider this. So that's where we're standing right now.
And if I could, I heard three people come up and talk about public safety tonight. 1.3 million dollars is basically 13 police officers, okay? Now, when we went to the citizens and asked them, and you all have a copy of what we asked them, okay? We asked them what do they want and they told us they wanted to spend .7 mils for a 55-hour library, okay? They voted on that and that's what they told us they wanted, okay? I think we have an obligation to do that. And I don't think they asked us to forfeit 13 police officers in three years from now to subsidize the library. And you can snicker and laugh about that, but the reality for Mr. Darling is it's irresponsible for us to do that. Three years from now, we're going to be in serious trouble. We're going to be okay for two years. That's the way I look at it. But we can't jeopardize our future the third year. What makes more sense to me is, and I understand that everybody wants the library open on the weekend, okay? It makes sense to me, okay? I want to do that, but I don't want to jeopardize our future three years from now and I don't want to tap into public safety or maybe we are going to have some revenue that we can look at in the future to get our police force back up to a good staff. I think the prudent thing to do, open it on Saturday, close the door on Friday for now, let's look at the budget in March, when we're going to see the real numbers. We don't even have the staff to open the doors seven days a week today, okay? To ask them to hurry up and get staff for a seventh day, I think is unrealistic in itself. But I think the prudent thing to do is open the doors on Saturday, close them on Friday, cost-neutral, doesn't cost us a dime. Look at it in March.
Councilman Campbell?
I would agree with Councilman Slater. I think that's the logical thing to do since we really don't want to be taking more and more money out of our budget at this point. So I would agree with his projection on what we should do, which was our original plan, which was to get the library open on Saturday. And I think that's what we should stick to.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes, Mayor. I have a question on this proposal D, this resolution you just moved. This 340,000 additional expenditures, is this still 55 hours a week? I guess probably, Mr. Darling?
Yes.
If seven days a week, and proposed resolution is seven days, people voted for 55 hours a week, is this $340,000 still per year in proposal D, still a 55-hour-a-week library?
Sixty-two.
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 Okay. So I guess circling back, to get a seven-day-a-week library, is it feasible to still operate on 55 hours spread over seven days? Is the question. And if that's the case, what would that additional expenditure be?
Well, to take the first part of your question with the existing staff, and I'm going to start, if you'll bear with me, with the staff that I have right now. We're 300 staff hours short. So to start a seven-day operation in the near future, there is not enough staff to cover. And I guess to please understand, with a seven-day library, there are any number of scheduling permutations. You could have the library open from 10 to 2, or 3 to 9, or 6 to 9, or 4 to 8, or, you know, how do you want to do that? So, you know, there's as many different permutations as there are, you know, clouds in the sky. But given my staffing levels right now being 300 hours short, I can tell you that, I'm sorry, I know you want a can-do attitude and I want to do it and I really want to be open Saturday, but currently, with 300 staff hours short, I think service would suffer. And for those of you who don't know me, who are not as familiar with me, where I always approach a subject is from a service perspective. I really feel that that is so important to consider in a community that I think deserves the best. And I'm not talking about even a platinum standard, but I don't want there to be, you know, people waiting in line for 45 minutes to have a question answered or to have their materials checked out or to get the help that they need. I don't think that's good service and I don't think it's a service this community warrants. So that's the kind of service that the people will get if the library were open seven days right now, waiting in line 45 minutes at least. Once all the budgeted positions are filled, so all 69 positions are filled, I had the staff do some schedules, just some general schedules. And to use a sports analogy, there's nobody on the bench. What it would mean is that all 69 staff members, six full-time, 63 part-time, would have to work all the time. Nobody can call in sick, nobody can take a vacation, nobody can leave, nobody can resign, there can be no emergencies. In some cases, you have staff working six, if not seven, days a week. There's simply not enough people to stretch across seven days. There's no wiggle room, there's nobody on the bench. If you're a game player and you know that game Jenga, it's like this, and if you pull out one piece, it all falls down. And so to me, I don't think that that's a sustainable option. If you would like me to do that, I will do it. But as soon as one person leaves, it kind of all falls to pieces. And to be honest with you, I don't know if many of the staff members are going to really get on board with working six to seven days a week.
Councilwoman... Mayor Potem, McGinnis?
Well, and I had another issue too that pertains, I guess, to the human resource side of things, is that we could make a decision now about changing something, but you're just in the process of building up a staff that can run the library at the 55 hours a week with the schedule that's been in place. You're here today giving us some four different options and I appreciate you taking the time to, just when you thought that your situation was somewhat stable after the millage election and we knew we had dedicated funding and we knew it wasn't going to be, it wasn't going to be cut into. Now, again, we're asking you to give us new permutations and I'm fine with that because I think it's important for us to discuss on council what our options are, but I don't think that it would be wise when you're trying to build up to a certain level to provide staff for 55 hours a week, which is what people voted for, if they read their ballot or if they went to the polls, that we'd ask you to, well, just hurry up in the meantime, can you add a lot more staff because we'd like to do this? And then when it comes to budget sessions in March and April, we might ask you to change it again and fire people that you've just hired if we realize that we can't sustain it. To me, it just doesn't seem like the prudent thing to do right now. If we want to switch a day and we can do that and it's cost-neutral and you're telling us that as of January 1st, you'll have the manpower to do that, I think that that's fine. If members of council that are sitting up here really feel like they have their finger on the pulse of the community and Saturday is the day that people will not stand to have it closed and we can have it open by closing it on Friday and working towards some stability in this department, I would be okay with that. Anything other than that, hurrying up to hire more people so we can look at it again and potentially fire them or rearrange things in March, just doesn't seem like it will help us reach the goal that we've been trying to reach with the library over the last two years.
Councilwoman Cheats, did you have, or Councilwoman Slater?
I'd like to amend the resolution.
I haven't made my comments. I would like, if I could make comments. Can I make comments before?
Councilwoman Slater can amend the resolution and you can continue with comment.
Okay.
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby directs city management to continue a six-day operation of the Troy Public Library with the day of closure being Friday, effective of the week of January 1st, 2012.
Councilor Sturrock?
I'll second.
A discussion?
May I, Mayor?
Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to circle back to the very first comment that I made and that's the fact that there's, and this is a document that was given to us on November 14th regarding the hours of operation of the library. And it states in here that we have an unassigned fund balance for the amended budget for 2012 of 357,579. Again, we're halfway through the year, better, and we haven't, we don't have full staffing, so I have to assume that that number is actually higher than the budgeted numbers. And we're only looking for $340,000 to fund a seven-day library. So the money is there to do this and then we can evaluate in March or April when the budgets come along to see where we're at with regard to all of the things that, you know, we know with regard to early retirements, concessions, better-than-assumed actuarial findings, and hopefully a better real estate market that helps us beat these budgets. The other thing that we need to look at is, in addition to that, is the $3,200 per computer that it costs us to run the library computers. It strikes me that $3,200 per computer, that might be the entire IT budget spread across the city where maybe a police computer is a little bit more complicated than one that we need at a library. So is that really, is $3,200 what it takes to keep computers running in a library? So there are some other costs that we need to look at as well to try to pad those numbers.
Senior Manager Sturrock?
Thank you. And I don't read campaign literature and I don't read employee blogs that are on newspapers and so forth. My job as manager, though, is to let the council hear what they need to hear and not necessarily what they want to hear, okay? And I think what the governing body needs to hear, speaking very generally, of course, is that the voters voted for a .7 mil increase to fund a library that is not the kind of library that we used to have. It was a six-day-a-week library. If we wanted to have the voters vote for a seven-day-a-week operation like we had, it would be over a mil, as Mrs. McGinnis indicated. Now, it's up to the city council to define the values of the community. I think I said that last week as well. Currently, our three-year budget document has a community value that public safety, police and fire, and infrastructure maintenance are a priority in the city of Troy. They're the core competencies. And what's unfortunate about that priority is that the, you know, the library was slated for closure, our recreation department is self-sufficient, which is the good news, but the bad news is that a lot of programs were canceled because we're essentially self-supporting if you take out the debt service. We had to deal off the museum and nature center to a 501(c)(3). So all the statements I heard have some degree of validity. City council can say that you're open seven days a week and we'll take the money and drill down fund balance. You have the authority to take money from the fund balance to do about whatever you want. My only request is that you do it at a three-year look and a five-year forecast. Getting to the library, the reason there's a fund balance in the first year is because the .7 mils is predicated on a declining revenue line for real estate values, commercial, industrial, and residential properties as well as personal property. And we hope that values will increase beginning 2014 and will increase our revenue line. But we want to have a, what's called a smoothed-out, if you will, cost for the library so that Kathy doesn't start out hiring a lot of people and then, well, we have a decline in revenues, our .7 mils is now worth less, so we have to lay off these folks. We wanted to have a fine plane. But if the city council wants to be open seven days a week, you know, it will require a budget amendment because we're not allowed to operate a fund in deficit. And the fund balance could be drilled down to accomplish that. You decide what level you think is adequate for a fund balance and we, you know, you make that determination. But you should make that, I think, in the context of some other issues that we have. We used to have 137 sworn police officers. We have 95 sworn police officers. You can dial back the clock to 1979 and that's where we are for police coverage. If that's okay with the governing body and you don't want to tackle that problem and you want to give the money out of the general fund for the library, that's up to you, you know. You've had the resolution, we'll make it happen, but you need to know that we're down 42 sworn police officers from a high point, okay? You also need to know... You also need to know that we subsidize the Oakland County Road Commission on their snow plowing for all of our major streets. That's about a half million dollars a year. As Mr. Darling indicated, we're going to be in good shape for the next two fiscal years. I think we're going to have revenues that exceed expenditures that will add to the fund balance. But if you look ahead, we have these problems that are looming. I think in two years from now, maybe, I think it's two years from now, I've got to reduce staff with the exception of the police department to a four-day work week, which is another 20% cut in pay on top of the 10% cut. And I'm having problems filling those positions. And again, I'm not saying this to muddy the waters, I'm just saying this so that you have a clarity on the scope and breadth of the decision that you make. But it's up to you.
Anyone else?
Once again, I'd just like to say, we don't have the staff right now to go to seven days a week. I'm willing to work with you in March when the budget issue comes up and retake a look at this seven-day issue. But the prudent thing to do, if we want to get Saturday moving as quick as we can, is let's substitute Friday for it, let's get Saturday back on the books, revisit the whole budget process, not do a budget amendment, listen to what the people said right now, revisit it in March, and retake a look at it, and I'd be happy to open my eyes up again in March. We don't have the staff to do this.
Councilman Teetz?
The motion that's on the table is six-day operation closed Friday, is that correct?
There are actually two motions on the table. The one is the Mayor Daniels amendment, and the other one is Councilman Slater's amendment.
So, which one do we have to vote on?
You would vote on Mayor Daniels' amendment first?
Aye.
Under scenario two, the six-day operation closed on Friday. Under that scenario, it's also $170,000 deficit after over five years. Am I not correct?
No. No, there would be additional funding of $35,000 a year to keep it open. At the end of the Millage, there would still be fund balance, you'd still be in a positive fund balance position under that scenario.
You would have $170,000, $172,000 in the library's fund balance at the end of five years. I tried to indicate the negative, if you look to scenario four, the negative is in the parentheses, and I said negative fund balance after five years. All the other scenarios, keep a positive fund balance.
Right. It would be a positive fund balance, representing approximately about 7% of your annual expenditures. Of course, we try and keep our fund balance around 15%, so obviously it'd be less than that. However, it wouldn't be in a deficit position.
What is our fund balance right now, Mr. Darling?
What is our fund?
What percentage is our fund balance right now? Can you give us a percentage?
For the library?
For the entire fund balance, if you will.
Well, it's by fund, so you need to tell me what fund?
Well, we've always talked about needing 10% to 15% to keep our AAA bond rating. Then we said that we had 17%. I've heard rumor that we might even have as much as 22%. So, I'm just trying to get a target. What do we have as a fund balance that we're working with right now?
Again, what you would call an unassigned fund balance, I will see that next week, it's going to be around 21%.
21%, thank you.
Unassigned.
I want to be clear that that is for the city, that is not for the library. The library doesn't have a fund balance yet because this is the first year of the Millage. And so, and to Councilman Henderson's point, I feel like I want to clarify this, if you don't mind if you indulge me a little bit. You are absolutely correct that we do have open positions, but the staff in the existing positions have been working extra hours. So, yes, there will be, I believe, a savings at the end of the year. But to give you an idea of staff wages, the line in that budget, personal services, which at the end of five months should be somewhere in the neighborhood of 42%, and it's actually about 35% that we've expended because staff are budgeted for 20 hours, but in some cases, they've been working 25 and 30 to cover the open positions. Now, when all the positions are filled, then everybody has to work what they've been budgeted. There's no room for those extra hours. So, that's how I've been able to keep the library going for 55 hours because everybody's working additional times. So, there will be a savings, I'm sure that there will be, but it's not going to be 50%. So, I just want to make sure I clarified that for you.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Just to be clear, Councilman Slater, what you're really proposing is it, proposal B here, resolution B?
Mm-hmm.
Closure day is Friday.
Correct.
And basically, that's the one you're proposing?
Correct.
And three-year budget to reflect an additional $35,000 expenditures per year?
Correct.
That's right. You know, I'd like to see this open seven days. I think it's not doing our library staff good service to say we're going to do that when they're not staffed, and I don't think you'll have the staff for it. And I want you to succeed. I want a seven-day-a-week operation. You do too.
I do too.
And I think we have to look at it in the context of the budget. So, I would support Councilman Slater's resolution here, but with a caveat, that when we're doing the budget for next year, I want to really be focusing on a seven-day library, so as a library manager and so forth. If the other people agree with me, I'm just planting the seed. You might be thinking that way and getting ready for that, because like Councilman Henderson is saying, I think there's some wiggle room in the allocation cost that you're being allocated for computers. I think you're being overcharged, but that's just my opinion. I thought of today, we've passed your budget, but we need to revisit that, we can't do that here tonight. So, I'm willing to support Councilman Slater, that's a short-term thing, but I want what you want. I want a seven-day library. But I think to say we're going to have this January the 7th puts undue burden on the staff with holidays and so forth to get people, and you won't be giving quality service, and that's not what we want. Okay? I'm ready to call for the vote.
I would like to make some comments.
Sure, go ahead, please.
Councilman Slater?
Mr. Teetz is going.
Councilman Teetz, go ahead.
I just, the library issue has become a very politicized issue, and something that has happened tonight, and I hope won't happen going forward in the budgeting process, is a game of, it's a library or the police. It's an either-or game. It's not an either-or game. And I don't like that sort of politics going on, and it's my understanding that the ICMA report came in and said that 97 police officers are what is necessary. Mr. Zerlik, is that correct or incorrect?
Sustainable.
Fair minimum.
It was determined to be sustainable for 97. We had to put back, I think, the city council put back four that was initially slated for cuts.
But I guess, going forward, I don't think anyone's here talking about cutting police officers or whatnot, and the ICMA reports this is sustainable, but I don't think it should be, or else we could say every paperclip is a tenth of a thousandth of a police officer. We can't get in that sort of mindset. We have to have our priorities, police, fire, roads, but you can't quantify every single budget expenditure as a police officer, because this would be 1.7 police officers that were pulling off the roads if we vote for this six-day operation, because it's 170,000, assuming one police officer's total compensation package is probably 100,000. But we'll soon know more about what that'd actually be once we get to the Open Troy stuff. So, that's a concern I have. Otherwise, off to you.
Well, first of all, I think that we all need to remember that a budget is a set of assumptions. I've been accused of being ideological, or my ideology is driving my decisions, excuse my slaughter of the English language. But if you think that other people aren't driven by ideology when they're preparing a budget, I think you're probably naive. So, the budget numbers that are being presented to us always seem to be sort of skewed in one side. For example, we talk about a 1.3 deficit in a three-year period, but we talk about a $3.7 million increase per year in taxes by this .7 mil. Let's say we smoothed it out, we're getting $3 million a year for three years. That's $9 million extra money. We have $2.6 million a year in employee concessions. 2.6 times 3 is $7.8 million over the next three years budget period. So, now we have $9 million plus $7 million. We have $16 million. We haven't even begun to talk about the benefits of the pension actuaries, where we know that the numbers are better than expected. We have a 21% overall undesignated fund balance. I'm surprised Councilman Slater last week said that he wouldn't be opposed to using some of that fund balance in order to have the library open seven days a week. So, now today, we're talking about all the budget problems that are associated with having a library open seven days a week after the people raised the money by virtue of agreeing to a tax increase. We have a 10% unemployment rate in this city, I believe, give or take a percentage or so. We have a cadre of volunteers that want the library open. We have one community cohesive center, and that's the library. We don't have a downtown where we can go and meet and gather, but we have a library. That's our one meeting place. After the citizens have given us the tax increase and the employees have made $2.6 million a year in concessions, and we have better-than-expected actuarial reports, and I can show residential sales have flattened out for the last nine months. Now, nine months don't a trend make, I understand that, but we have to look at the picture, what we have to work with. So, we have smoother residential real estate sales than what we predicted. We can have an ideology of starting a budget as a ski slope, and everything that we then project goes downward from there. Or we can have a budget where we say, let's take and build a ladder, let's try to find ways to build a ladder. I think that the citizens have given us a way to build a ladder that will allow us to open the library seven days a week in April or May, when we are looking at the budget again. Then let's revisit if we should cut the hours on Monday. I don't see any reason why we can't have a seven-day library operation. We can configure the hours however we wish, but right now, I want to vote for a seven-day library starting January 1st, and we'll help you find the staff. I cannot believe that with a 10% unemployment rate, we can't find people that would man the library. As important as it is to this community, as many people feel so passionate about this library being open on Saturdays or seven days, I find it incredible to believe that we can't find people to staff the library. That's, my vote is going to be to open the library seven days a week, and then we'll look at the budget and all the numbers that are associated with it in April or May, when it's budget time. Now, do we have a vote on my resolution first?
I'd just like some clarification. Councilman Slater, was your resolution to substitute Mayor Daniels' resolution to amend, or were you intending on moving item B?
I'm intending to move item B.
Move item B, okay. So, then, we would vote on, it would be considered a substitution, you would be substituting B for what was moved originally. So, we would vote on Councilman Slater's substitution, then we would vote on Mayor Daniels' amendment.
Okay.
Okay. So, you made the resolutions, and I'm not sure who seconded, Councilman Campbell, so we have our discussion now and we'll vote.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Mayor, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on this vote. I just, I'm a little bit nervous about this, but as I understand it, Councilman Slater, you moved to substitute resolution B for resolution D as amended by the mayor. So, the vote then that you're taking right now is whether or not to substitute. You're going to vote on whether or not you agree to substitute first, and then the second vote will be taken after that.
So, voting is to substitute, voting on my resolution?
No, 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 no. It's voting on his resolution, B, as opposed to D. So, it's voting whether or not you want to vote on Councilman Slater's B. That's the first vote.
Did you vote on B?
All right, so...
So, that's the first vote.
Then there'll be a final, then there'll be a vote on the final resolution as it's stated. So, there'll be actually three votes. Councilmember Teetz?
You've made me more confused. This is over the substitution of Councilman Slater's language, correct?
Do you want to substitute B for D? That is the question.
That's correct, okay. No.
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
So, then, Councilmember Slater's motion for substituting his amendment for the amendment that Mayor Daniels moved is passed. So, now we would vote on the original resolution, which is item, it's item B essentially.
The vote, just again, our clerk is suffering from a flu tonight too, so I think it's also very difficult for her. But right now, what you're voting on is B. B has passed, that is the vote, whether or not you want to approve resolution B that's in the booklet here.
So, now do we do the regular process where I ask for someone to read the resolution?
No, it's already been moved. It's already been moved, you're just taking a vote.
Taking the vote on resolution B, and that is having the library open on Saturdays and closed on Friday.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. The vote, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Hey, so, that takes care of the library issue. It's opened on Saturday and closed on Friday. Okay.
Beginning January 1st.
Beginning January 1st. Consent agenda, were there any items that anyone wanted removed from the consent agenda? Do we have a resolution then to, yes, Councilmember?
The Troy City Council hereby approves all items of the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Resolution forwarded by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Discussion, please. No discussion, vote please, Mrs. Bitner.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Well, motion passes. Looks like the next item of business, are there any council referrals? There's none noted that I see. It looks like we're to the reports section? Council comments section, my apologies. Any council comments? Councilman Teetz?
Yep. I will be holding my first office hours on Thursday, December 8th, at 7:00 PM at the Troy Community Center. Come and visit me, say hello. I'm sure you'll have many opinions to share. I'll be available for about an hour, and then I have to get to something else. And the process will be, I'll talk to one person at a time, because sometimes in groups, one person dominates and they don't get a chance to share their full opinion. So, I hope to see you there, again, at the Troy Community Center. I'll have a sign-up and all that jazz, so look forward to it.
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, just a comment on N5 Open Troy. And the drafts that we have, I think that probably Mr. Darling put a lot of work into that. And I think it's a great start. It's just a draft. Question is, looking at that, when, anticipate we'll have that in December, online in December, and then we could tweak it from there, maybe?
We plan on going online in December. Yes, sir. Mid-December, shooting for, in a couple weeks.
Okay. And to continue what I liked about it, not only could just click on the check register, you can drill down. You can click on a check, you can see what that check was for, who it was issued to, you go into the detail. It appeared that the wages portion of it is patterned pretty much after Troy School District, which is good.
Yes, sir.
Also, I noted in the paper this weekend that what we expected was going to happen is going to happen. Contracts and so forth now are going online at the state level for state, county, and 28 municipalities, I believe, in Michigan, the major ones. So, the contracts are going anyway. But I still think it's best that, as the city of Troy, we put them on because it's easier for people to find. So, what we're doing, I think, is trying to get a little ahead of the curve because it's coming anyway. So, thank you for your work on that, and I think it's a step in the right direction. Look forward to seeing the detail.
Councilman Slater?
Yeah, as a follow-up to N5, I think, Councilman Fleming, you had brought up bringing a resolution forward to ask the state to do the same thing and pattern it after the school district. And I would like to ask Mr. Zerlik to bring a resolution back to council for the next meeting in regards to that.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to do that. Just for clarification, that's essentially to ask the state to require... I'll be happy to do that. Just for clarification, that's essentially to ask the state to require municipalities to essentially do what we have done, the check register, the contract, salaries and benefits, and bargain, bargaining and contracts?
Mirror after the school district, like, like was done on the...
All right.
Any other comments? I also have a comment, if I could, regarding this issue, Open Troy. I noticed when I was reviewing the, the documentation, that vacation and sick time and other perks like auto allowances aren't on the template.
Good question, Mayor, and I spoke with staff about that. We wanted to default to what the school district did, which is essentially is Medicare wages, and that includes the, you know, vacation pay, sick pay. What's in that category is what is, you know, essentially issued a W-2, which is all, all payments on behalf of that particular job classification. Otherwise, we'd have to say, you know, here is essentially the liability for someone that takes vacation, and if they take vacation time, they don't get paid for it, but if, if they don't take vacation, they do. This way, it's all part of their salary cost. If there's vacation pay, if there's sick pay, if there's a, a auto allowance that's over and above the standard 55 cents a mile that someone receives, that's all identified as, as income.
I would like to see it broken out. I think a reference might be November 22nd, 2010, N7, has a complete and total breakdown of employee compensation. I might like to see that particular document followed, so that we can have a complete breakdown of numbers.
And, you mean the sixth?
Yeah, November 22nd, 2010, N7.
Or, or last week's?
2010, last year.
2010, okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's not something that you have to look at now. I'm just saying, use that to try to expand the template, so that we have a full picture of the total compensation of the employees. That's my recommendation. I also thought that the couple of comments that were made during public comments were kind of good and might be considered, that you have not names, but reference numbers, so that we can make sure that we track, you know, specific employee groups by some non-identifying number, not specific to the person. And there was one other comment that was made that I thought was kind of interesting, and I wrote it down, but I don't know where it's at. If I think of it, I'll send you an email. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. The, again, we'll do what the governing body tells us to do. Perhaps it could be fleshed out in the, in the resolution. You could talk about that next week, because what we, what we're asking the state to do would be essentially to have a requirement on municipalities, what they've done for the school districts. And what they've done with the school district is said, okay, whatever someone makes, whether it's, you know, it's inclusive of their, their actual pay, it's their, any, you know, their compensation, if you will. It's all included in that, in that Medicare wage. It's everything.
I'd like it broken out, if we could have it.
Okay. Well, if the governing body wants me to break it out, that's...
A resolution.
I, I, that requires a resolution?
Well, it's the, it's because, if you want it broken out and someone else doesn't, then what do I do? You know what I'm saying? So it's...
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of a patterning, patterning this after the school district, so that it becomes uniform across the state. That's what the school district does. That's what we're asking the state to do, so that's what we should do.
Maybe we should ask the school district to get a little more detail, so that we are the leadership city, or leadership group, and we have the, the full complement of information for people to make a full analysis. I don't know, can we have a resolution to expand this report, the template, a little bit?
Mayor, it would require a waiver of the rules if you were going to make a resolution at this point.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I think since we're going to discuss this in terms of sending a resolution to the state, and this hasn't launched yet, I mean, the key, I thought, for us as a group was to get the information up, get it in a format that was going to be user-friendly, so that people could access the information and then understand what it means. And I feel like we're already complicating that a little bit. I, I think the goal would be to get the information up in a way that people can understand it and utilize it. Obviously, we are going to be able to make additions, corrections, deletions to the system, once it's up and running, and we see maybe where more information is needed, or where a different format is going to be the most user-friendly. But I think before we overcomplicate the issue, my, my concern when we started this discussion was that we were going to have something available that people could use to compare to other municipalities. So we're already going to be ahead of the game. Most municipalities aren't even going to have these numbers available to the public to compare. But I think when they do, and the ones that do already, this would be the format that's going to be most comparable. So I'm comfortable with this format. I thought it was great. I had in my notes. I was really impressed. I think it's an exciting concept, and I'm very appreciative of the fact that you were able to put something together that not only looks good, but it appears like it's going to be very functional. So I would be good to stick with that, and we can focus on how we're going to lay out the tool to the public and make it the most useful at this point. And then if we want to make corrections at a later date, once it's up and running, I would be happy to talk about it then.
I would just wonder why it would be more complicated to give a full picture to begin with, so that we don't have to make changes down the road. I'm simply asking for a couple more breakouts. I don't think it's a complicated request. Are there other comments?
Councilman Fleming?
As I started this ball rolling, I think, in the meeting, I'm pleased with what we have, but I, I think it can be improved and will be improved as we move forward. And I think what you're asking for is not unrealistic at all, that we, we include more details, break out some of the benefits. Right now, I'd just like to see what, what's proposed working, and a model that works, and we can go and experiment with and try and make sure if we want to make enhancements on it. I have no problem either way. We can leave it the way it is, or we can improve it. I don't think it'd be much trouble to add a couple of columns, but you need to be specific, I think, Mayor, exactly what you're, you're expecting, how much for breakdown, because there's only so much you can get on a spreadsheet, and then it becomes not very legible. What they've got now is, is pretty easy to read. But whatever you, I have no strong objection to making changes.
Yeah, again, we're just trying to make, you know, something complicated, simple and comparable. Everybody gets a W-2, everybody has a box that says Medicare wages on it. Again, some of these wage things can be complicated. What is longevity? What does vacation? What does, what do these things mean? Well, we certainly know what compensation means, and we certainly know what the US government thinks compensation means, and that is all reported in the Medicare wages as total compensation for employees. And I think that was the idea, was to make it so that it is comparable to other districts. Again, because some people may not have longevity, some people may have one week of vacation, two weeks of vacation. Again, people don't get paid for vacation, per se, and they just take the time off. But again, the issue is, is that's reflected in the Medicare wages box. Plus, it's easy to then data mine, right? When we get done with the calendar year, we issue the W-2s that can automatically go online. It's easy to implement and comparable.
It's interesting how we use the word complicate. We're making it complicated for the people, the taxpayers who are paying the wages, to be able to see what the breakdown is, in an effort not to make it complicated for the preparation of a document that's supposed to be designed to give the taxpayers the full scope of what their money is being used for. But if the council wants to keep it as its present form, I'm just one vote. I can only say what I would like to see, and get it done right to begin with, rather than have to even tweak it down the road. But whatever the council wishes.
Councilman Teetz?
I, I think we should just get it up, and then we can keep improving it. I mean, I always say, just get started, and, and then we can fix it. But there is something that I would like to see fixed before you put it up, is, could you put the actual name of the department in there? It says STS on the three examples you gave.
Yes. You know, again, this was developed by...
Yeah, and I'm just throwing that out. Can you make sure? And then, this is not something to find the answer to tonight, but I'd like to know the answer. I'd like to know...
I'm sorry. STS is a streets department. That does, that STS is a streets department. So your answer is, yes, there'll be a police department, there'll be a finance department.
Okay, but internally, it's known as STS?
Yes.
Okay.
We can probably...
Can we, can we set it somehow, so the layman could know that that stands for a streets department?
I believe we can. It may be limited in terms of characters.
One, one councilman didn't know that, so I would assume...
But, yeah, we have a limited number of characters, but we'll be, whatever we can do to make it easier to read, we'll do that.
Even if it's a keep, whatever. The second question, the, the second question, it's something that I think you have to think about, is how do we account for overtime pay? Is there no accounting for that?
Well, again, that'd be part of the Medicare wages.
Be more, okay.
It'd be, it's all part of wages.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And so, that would be an indicator of, of overtime, obviously through wages and rates. So...
Councilman Fleming?
Just to be clear, make sure we're on the same page. Mr. Darling?
Yes.
What this is, is an actual, this is not a budgeted number. What you're showing is what's reported to the government. It's actual. So your salary would include your overtime or any shift differential or anything.
Vacation pay.
So this is not something that we're estimating is going to be. This is what's actually paid. This is what showed on the W-2 form.
Absolutely.
And you report it quarterly to the government. You could update it quarterly, you know, whatever.
Well, we'd like to update it annually, because that gives you a bigger, better picture. That's comparable. People like to look at annual wage.
I don't know if you intend to, but if a position is vacant or eliminated, is that going to, is that going to be on there?
That, it's a good question. We've eliminated a lot of positions, and we could go a number of ways. One is that we could just put the position there as, you know, like, for an example, we had a director of finance and administration that, that retired, and I'm not going to replace that position. I'm trying to replace it with a less, lesser paying position. That position right now is budgeted, but it's vacant. So, you know, as of December 31st, that employee was here about half the year. So do I put down essentially his entire salary for that half a year, or do I just put down positions vacant at this time? Or else, like in the police department, there's going to be a slew of positions that are, that were here as of, you know, sometime during the, this current calendar year, but they're eliminated. You know, so do you want me to put down, this position is eliminated? And, you know, if you look at perhaps, with the user in mind, the reader, it may be more important for them to see the positions that have been eliminated. And so this is a report of those that are essentially currently budgeted, as opposed to an entire slate of positions. That's what the school does, though. They list everything, even if the position's been eliminated, they'll list what they had for a portion of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So that's something that, that you folks can advise. We can go one way or the other.
Well, it seems to me that there should be something there, because it could, be half the salary could be listed there. And it seems like maybe there should be an explanation there, next to it. Yeah, especially if it's been eliminated.
My understanding is the position numbers in here refer to a position. So if you've seen the same position number more than once, you know you had, you know, two people in that position through the year. So you might have six months for one and six months for another. So that position number helps rectify those part-year...
Councilman Fleming?
Please. Yeah, I, I like that idea with the position numbers, but I agree, you should put every person there, only if they worked two months or whatever. That way, you have something to tie to. You're tying to a report that you're giving to the government, actual expenses. You might put a key there, a footnote or something, that this person only worked three months or part-time or whatever, or position eliminated. But at least you tie back to something you can reconcile. You show actually what was paid to every position, even if they only worked one month or six months.
Your honor, if I may, the, the other item that I included, N6 Total Wages and Employees for the City of Troy, that essentially is the sum of all W-2s, whether or not it's a full-time, a part-time, a seasonal, a temporary. If someone was here for two weeks and quit, it's all included in, in that. And I suspect that when we're finished with this report, the sum of all the salaries would be the same amount as what was on that Total Wages and Employees for the City of Troy. It would be the sum of all the W-2s.
Sure.
Any more discussion? I'm not sure where we're at now. Do, do we have to have a vote of any sort? I thought we were just discussing, yeah. So basically, I think we've, we've covered all the items on the agenda. No study items. Meeting is adjourned.